Hello ladies and gentlemen, I'm calling to the board of council. Thank you very much. And please rise and pledge what?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Melissa Corr always.
Maggie Hough here.
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
Mr. Sainz.
Here.
All right, entertain the motion for the minutes of the June 5th meeting. Make a motion if you see possible. We start in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Thank you. All right. Matt, you want to grab the list for visitors of communications when you're back?
Yes, sorry.
Just go like that?
Oh, okay. All right. Hey, Nick, say roundy.
Roundy, yeah. You're going to start all over. We're at the point of the agenda for visitors of communications, so get it on our list. Okay. Robert Egline.
Good evening, Council. Robert Egline, Warner's Road, Fort Thomas, Kentucky. I spoke today with a city administrator and volunteer about the city's Fort Thomas, Port of July parade for this year, 2023. My question, I've got kind of in here in three paragraphs. How does the city justify the financial support of the parade? That is, fuel for the city equipment, personnel, and for the safety of the parade, which is administered by, what I was told today, a volunteer. I was told today that the volunteer that handles the parade makeup may not know all who will have a foot in the parade until the day before. Expenses as mentioned above from taxpayers, but handled without city supervision, again, what I was told today, by a volunteer, sounds unacceptable, sounds unacceptable to me, a taxpayer. Please explain the city's control of the Fourth of July parade.
Matt, you want to read that one?
Sure. We do have two people that volunteered to organize the parade. I wouldn't say that they're not supervised, I wouldn't say that the city has nothing to do with it. We, you know, we obviously weren't together with them, but there's a lot of things in the city of Fort Thomas that are, a lot of things that are done because of volunteer work.
I was just speaking about the parade.
Yeah, so there's the two people that run it, run it for the past three years, maybe more. The YMCA used to run it, and then the transition came to the city running it, and those two volunteers were the ones that run it. So, we have a pre-meeting with them, I already had a meeting, you know, the event staff here regularly has meetings with them.
Doesn't that sound a bit odd? That the volunteer does not know who's going to be in the parade until the day before? So, is there a process that says, no, you cannot be in the parade? Or yes, you can?
Yes.
Is there a list of requirements? We, that I could see?
Yeah.
They get today or have set to me?
Not today, but I will, but I can follow up with you on that. I know, I had a meeting with, with them, and we discussed the things that will be included, won't be included, we've had issues in the past, things like that. So, I know there's, there's requirements.
Well, I was told today that if it became political, they would stop the parade. There's a Democrat Party in it, Republican, no problem.
Okay.
I'm not going to get into the subject matter that I talked about, but that's political.
Correct.
So, it's already political.
Okay.
So, I don't understand the comment that I got from someone with the city that said it might be stopped if it becomes political. Could you explain that, please?
Perhaps you'd like to, perhaps you'd like to mention the someone's name you spoke to, which was not the city administrator, that was me this morning? And I do apologize, that was a bit of a slip on my part. You know, the, the, nobody wants to discontinue a parade.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Nobody wants to discontinue the parade. However, the volunteers that we have that do this, do it on a shoestring budget every year with every expense approved by the city of Fort Thomas.
Uh, they pay for the, the police?
No, no, every expense approved by the city of Fort Thomas. I didn't say who paid for it. Every expense that they have approved by the city of Fort Thomas.
How does he ask for clarity? He messes up.
So, approval is through the city of Fort Thomas.
Okay.
Correct. Uh, the volunteers operate, like I said, on a shoestring budget, they don't get, they don't get much for this. And if the two volunteers that currently do this cease to do it in the future, it would probably be kind of difficult to find somebody to, who would legislate this, who would do this, as well as they've gotten used to doing it. So, I, I don't know. I don't think we're going to stop the parade. That's not something that would happen. But, you know, the issue is, if it becomes too difficult, they may not want to do it anymore.
Difficult being what? How do you define difficult?
Difficult to determine who's in the parade, who's out of the parade, complaints. We've had issues with the length of the parade, with the stops and starts of the parade. Uh, I believe we, we've had parade participants screen our volunteers from time to time. So, basically, i- it's not the easiest job on the face of the land.
No problem. On the financial side, I don't know that I really got an answer about.
It is a, it is a city-funded event, so PD, it gets paid overtime for not just the parade, but we have festivities throughout the night to include fireworks. All of that is, is taxpayer money.
Okay, therefore, you can probably see where the citizens might see kind of a discrepancy between paying for this support and who's in the parade as a clue. Do I get any agreement there with council? That it is somewhat of a kind of conflicting?
I don't see a conflict, I'm on council.
All I can say is that I trust the two people that volunteer, and I can believe, uh, they are, they are Fort Thomas through and through, and they have the best intentions, and their heart is huge, and I trust them to make the decisions. And I hope that you aren't getting on any flak for what happens to some of the residents that are in trouble. I can tell you this, we've been lucky to have it for years, there were rentals for a long time, and what they have put up with and deal with for that parade is beyond any measure of what I want to do with. And that parade is a staple here, so I, I would say I'm leaving it in their hands, and when it comes to it, we'll deal with it afterwards if something happens, but I don't, I trust them personally to make the right decisions there also.
Personally, I do believe it's a staple. Something fantastic for my grandparents, and I enjoy it, and other people that I know enjoy it. So, sir, you were going to give me some information?
Yes.
How do I?
You can shoot me an email, or I'll, I've got your phone number here.
Yes.
Yes. And I, and I have a post-it note that was supposed to call you today, so I obviously didn't make it today, but I will.
Okay. So, you get word that I?
I did, and I'm aware of your, specifically kind of parade.
Thank you for your time.
Okay.
All right, Ken Whiniger.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city officials. I appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening, and I would like to read into the record a letter that I will leave with you along with a couple of other attachments. Dear Mr. Mayor and City Council Members, I write this letter to you with one simple request. Stop all consideration of new development or added amenities in Highland Hills Park until James Avenue is improved and extended to create a second entry point with full access to all areas of the park. As a longtime resident of Mayfield Avenue, I've witnessed the drastic changes in Highland Hills Park that have greatly increased the number of people using the park on a daily basis. The Frisbee Golf Course, Dog Park, and improved trail and network attract visitors from all over the region. Indeed, there is a sign at the end of the exit ramp from 471 on to Memorial Parkway directing folks to the hiking trails in our park. The improved shelters and bathrooms host events large and small, from gender reveal parties to graduation parties and church picnics. Regularly scheduled activities like Junior Cheer, elementary cross-country, and high school baseball games attract a large number of participants and spectators. And while the baseball field in Highland Hills Park is no longer open or available for use by the citizens of Fort Thomas, it hosts games and tournaments that include teams from all over the Midwest, including teams from as far away as Chicago, Illinois, and Ontario, Canada. Over the years, a once quiet neighborhood park has become a destination point for the entire Northern Kentucky, greater Cincinnati region, and beyond. If you go on the Frisbee Golf website, it shows our park as a destination for the region with Yelp reviews. Now, that very interesting. A quiet city park has slowly transformed into a regional sport and activity complex. As a result, the use of the park now far exceeds the capacity of Mayfield Avenue, the only access road to the park, and the available, exceed the available parking spaces in the park. Tower Park, arguably our busiest of our three parks in the city, has over 300 parking spaces, including 17 handicap designated spaces. That's a conservative number because I didn't count the VA parking, which is available and often used for events. There are three access points to Tower Park, none of which are residential streets, and two of these access entrances are managed by traffic control devices, a four-way stop sign and a stoplight which control the flow in and out of the activities that take place in that park. Rossford Park, my home park for a minute, that's good. Perhaps the city's least-used park with few amenities and few regularly scheduled events has 66 paved parking spaces, including two handicap designated spaces, and a designated drop-off area to keep traffic off of Rossford Avenue. While this park is located on a residential street, it's accessible from two directions, Rossford Avenue and Clover Ridge. By contrast, Highland Hills Park has one access point, Mayfield Avenue, which enters from and exits onto Highland Avenue, perhaps one of the busiest thoroughfares in Fort Thomas. There are no traffic control devices to regulate the flow of traffic onto Highland Avenue. The events held in this park often far exceed the 75 available parking spaces and six handicap parking spaces, and visitors frequently, this is no longer an infrequent thing, but visitors frequently park in the fields on both sides of the park road for the entire length of the park. I have pictures. It's difficult to fully describe the volume of traffic that traverses Mayfield Avenue on a daily basis, so I invite all of you to visit the park and see for yourself. Visit on a night like last Monday night, when Junior Cheer and a Summer League Baseball game were taking place simultaneously with the regular flow of Frisbee Golf and Dog Park traffic. That evening, one of our neighbors sat on her porch and counted over 175 cars passing her house in a 30-minute period of time, and quit counting not because the cars stopped, but quit counting because she was so frustrated with what she was seeing. I have a video, show it, of one of our neighbors sitting in his driveway, shooting it from his car, trying to exit his driveway onto Mayfield Avenue with a steady stream of cars flowing by for about eight minutes. See for yourself the cars parked in the grass on both sides of the road, and watch the cars as they hop the curb in front of our front yards, trying to pass each other on the way into and out of the park. Again, Tammy and I have pictures of car tracks through our front yard. Visit on a fall, on a fall Friday evening when the Junior Cross Country meet is taking place. Come on a July weekend during a traveling league baseball tournament, when games are scheduled from dusk to dawn for the entire weekend, and spectators are being charged a fee, I will repeat that, spectators are being charged a fee to park in the park in the grassy fields. Come for the elementary school end-of-year party, which began with food trucks, bouncy houses, and a DJ on Friday evening, and continued with a running event for the entire school early Saturday morning. Sit on my front porch any day, this is an honest invitation, this is not rhetorical. Come sit on my front porch any day of the week, as dog owners make their twice-daily, in most cases, drive to the dog park, and Frisbee golfers rush to meet friends for a few rounds. Perhaps, perhaps if you visited during these times, you would come to the same conclusion as many of us who live on Mayfield. Access to the park must be improved to support the volume of traffic that now enters and exits the park. This traffic problem on Mayfield Avenue has existed for a long time. It is not new, and it should not surprise anyone. In a report dated 2001, the Fort Thomas Parks and Recreation Master Plan Final Report presented to council, under the heading of What Fort Thomas Citizens Told Us is the following. Concerns at existing parks include the lack of adequate parking, overuse of some facilities, traffic congestion in the areas of the park. A 2003 email that then-city manager Jeff Erlingwine wrote to one of the residents on Mayfield said the following, and I quote, "The city has resisted," 2003, "the city has resisted improvements proposed in more recent years, in part because of concerns over traffic volume and related factors on Mayfield Avenue." A 2005 report presented to council summarized data that was captured on the street by what was called a Stealth Stat Traffic Speed Data Device, I hope it still exists here in the city, but it was placed on the utility pole just diagonally across from my front yard, and data were gathered in 2002 and again in 2005. I don't want to misrepresent this data, these are not long-term data, they are small samples taken over a few weeks each of those years. On one of the days in 2002, the average daily traffic, the way the data was reported, ADT, was 482 vehicles a day on Mayfield Avenue. In 2005, three years later, that went up to 648 vehicles a day. That was 18 years ago. That was before, the data that I just read you before, were collected before expanding the shelters, the playgrounds, and the bathrooms. That data was taken before adding the Gaga Ball Pit. That data was adding before the Dog Park became regular use of our citizens. It was taken before adding the Frisbee Golf Course. It was taken before adding miles and miles of additional hiking trails, and it was taken before the improvements to the baseball field were made so that it could host national tournaments. A 2017 visioning process that many of us participated in, summarizer, had a public hearing in the mess hall, and there were six areas, you may remember, the city identified six different areas of study, one of those being parks and open spaces. At the citywide feedback meeting that night in the mess hall, improving access to Highland Hills Park received an overwhelming response. You may remember, we all had posted little dots that we could put on the posters. That issue, improving access to Highland Hills Park, received an overwhelmingly positive response, not just from those of us who live on Mayfield, but from citizens all over the city who use the facilities in Highland Hills Park and are inconvenienced by the traffic on Mayfield and Highland Avenues. And yet, access to Highland Hills Park, let this sink in for just a moment, access to Highland Hills Park, the 30 houses on both sides of Highland, on Mayfield Avenue, that access to Highland Hills Park remains exactly the same today as it was 70 years ago, when the park didn't even exist, and the park road was simply a tractor path that went through an orchard. The traffic problem on Mayfield Avenue and the need for additional improved entrance to Highland Hills Park has been monitored, it has been analyzed, it has been discussed for well over 25 years, but no action has been taken. As I close, let me be perfectly clear. A few matters I want to address. It is not the park or the activities in the park that I oppose. I love the fact that we live in a city that values its parks and provides a number of activities for those who visit them. I'm not saying we should keep people from the region out of our park. I visit parks in other areas and communities, and I love the fact that folks visit ours. But the activities that take place in Highland Hills Park now far exceed the capacity of the park and the residential street from which they are accessed. So, I repeat my request. No further development or added amenities in Highland Hills Park until a second full access road is developed. That ends my letter, and I think it took six minutes and 44 seconds. Thank you very much. I appreciate your attention. I would just say, folks, we've discussed this for a long time. Either we need to take action, or we need to have a public hearing and explain to us why that action's not taken for this. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ken. Roger Neff.
Hello, I'm Roger Neff, I live at 39 Mayfield Avenue. I just want to, first of all, thank you all on council for what you all do. Uh, thanks for your work for the city. So, I'm here, I want to second Ken's remarks. I agree with Ken's letter. Simply enough, enough in Highland Park, unless and until a second full access road is in the, to the park is built, as Ken so eloquently said. So, Highland Park has the access infrastructure of a neighborhood park. It cannot support more regional attractions. So, please, please, please do not put pickleball or a skate park in Highland Park at this time. Thank you.
Joe Cruz.
Hello, I'm here for a request for, I live at 43 River Road, Fort Thomas, and we're, the whole street got together lately, and it's a, it's been a cut-through for years, and we're requesting a no right, no right turn. It's basically speed humps, and there's no through traffic, which you can't, you know, you can't, there hasn't been a ticket, you know, ever for no through traffic. I mean, that's just kind of like, you know, you can't enforce that. They can say they were visiting somebody, or, so, I'm representing Garrison tonight, and here's a signature that everybody lives on there, and they all, uh, for it. And here's a map. And I don't know if you're all aware of what happened 23 years ago on that street? Okay, so you don't need that information or nothing on that?
Well, the rest of them don't, you're welcome to share.
Okay, yeah, um, a 11-year-old boy was crossing the street, he got ran over, and our family was the only family that witnessed it. It was very shocking, and to this day, it's, you know, it's hard to go back and, you know, remember it and that, but, his anniversary's coming up in a few days, and every year they come, and they ask, you know, how's the street? Basically, you know, I say it's fine, I have to live here, but it, it needs to be upgraded, because I can't enforce, you know, verbally yelling at people, you know, and they just wave at me and smile, and they go down the river. It's a cut-through.
So, it's, help me out here, I understand, because I know exactly what you're talking about, I was in council when that horrible thing happened.
Right, right.
We added all the stuff to try to minimize the cut-through, and it's not working. Is it, they're cutting from the top to the bottom, or the bottom to the top, or both?
They're cutting from the top to the bottom. And there's three speed humps, which that, that helped a lot. With, I mean, traffic was going 45, and now, I mean, you can do maybe 25, you know, over the humps. But the main thing is, once that last hump, you know, that they're cutting through it. So, you know, whoever they're cutting through behind from the top, you know, they slow down, they look up, and they go down River Road, or 50% goes to Army Reserve Road.
So, what your request is no right turn onto Garrison?
On Garrison, yes.
On the River Road from there?
Right, it's a state road, which you know. Okay, so, I have pictures, can I send them around?
So, Mr. Cruz, as we talked about this, today was the first day I got your, I got the, um,
Okay.
Your, your list of signatures.
Signatures. Yes.
So, I've already talked to Public Works, they're okay with, with doing that again. When, you know, when you first asked, I said I at least needed, just for council's information. When you first presented this, the no right turn, in my opinion, was going to affect mostly the residents there, so I told them, you know.
Right, that's what I thought at first, but when it came up to me, and a lot, it, you know, there's only like three homeowners are still on that street, you know, 23 years ago. I've been there 28 years, it tells you how old I am. But, uh, we have a lot of new people, you know, I mean, people want to raise their kids, you know, and, you know, one house just went for 325. So, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a nice street, you know.
So, so council, just so you're aware, you know, I told Mr. Cruz, if you can get 8% of the residents.
I got every one of them.
That's enough for me to really think this is something worthwhile, so.
Because we can't enforce no through traffic, correct?
So, it's a challenge for the PD?
I've called them numerous times.
The people who live on Garrison, if you got a no right turn on the river, what are all your neighbors going to do when they want to go to Silver Grove?
Um, 30%.
What are all of them?
Is that way, they're, they're going to go up and come down, because they, because they, they want to show respect to the street. I, I asked them that too, correct?
So, that, that's what the chief is getting at, is when we do this, they're going to, they're going to give it a couple of weeks, right, and provide a bunch of warrants, but then it's going to start,
Well.
Then it's going to start being citations, so whether you live there or not.
I got cameras all over my house, if you sneeze on my house, I'm on you, so.
So, Mr. Cruz, I.
We can monitor, give them a couple of weeks, you know, because people are going to be cut down, oh, no right turn. They're going to look and get it, the first time. Then just see what they do the second time.
All right, so, I'm going to review that, I'm going to make some contact just.
Okay, can I show you some pictures of the signs? I mean, okay, another thing too, the state is working with me, and the sign that we would like to have down there, they, uh, they, they went through their website, and they ordered it for me. It's a two-part sign. Okay.
And I told you, we'll, we'll make sure we use the correct sign that's part of the.
Right, this DOT 13A code, I mean, this is a state sign, it's what they use.
I guess, and if that's the sign that the Public Works approves as part of our program, then that's what we use, okay. So, I will get back with you after I review the list you dropped off.
No, it don't matter.
Yeah, you can hand it to me if you, do you want to leave them?
Uh.
I can leave them with them.
I only have one of these, so, I mean, you give them back to me?
Yeah. If you give them to me, I'll scan them, I'll send them out today.
I don't know if anybody else wants to see them, or you don't have enough time, or you want to keep going, or?
You can send them to me.
Yeah, I mean, this is, we've already, we've already approved this, so.
Oh, correct.
I think we're good. We can probably Google and street view it too.
Yeah.
It's pretty easy just to get on the street and see.
Right, I got it right here.
Like I said, my biggest concern was that the residents are not allowed to turn right at the end of the road, so as long as they're okay with it.
And there's going to be exceptions, okay, like garbage truck, he's so big, he says I have to go down and turn around at the ball pit, or come up. If you notice, there's a hill there, okay, there's emergency vehicles, okay, fire trucks, all that, you know, I know they have to turn right.
Yeah, we'll, we'll deal with that.
That's what we're looking for, to stop. Great.
Thank you for your work.
So, I've got your, I've got your information, and I'll reach out this week.
Great, because the anniversaries.
I know you wanted to do it for the anniversary.
And then they'd be coming back, and they'd come back, 50 people, and I would love to tell them something, maybe in the works.
Yeah, no, they, by next week, it won't be put up this week, but if everything checks out by next week, or a week later, we, Tim gets back that following week.
Right, they're on vacation.
But hopefully, next week, we should be able to tell if everything checks out.
Great, Matt.
Thank you, thank you.
Welcome. Hi, Ken to you.
For sure.
Debbie Hamel. And I mean, you can pass them around.
Debbie Hamel, I live at 33 Madonna, and I'm here to share some comments about the city's ongoing plans to put in permanent pickleball courts in our wonderful city. And I want to thank Ken Whiniger for doing a lot of work for me, actually, because he was praising our park system here in our town, and, and they are, they are wonderful. But on all the activities that he basically mentioned, you do a great job with helping with the younger children with all the equipment, you do a great job. We got sand volleyball, we got outdoor basketball courts, we have baseball tournaments, baseball field, baseball leagues, you have basketball leagues, all for young people in this town, as it should be. And I don't want to insult any of you all that are not senior citizens out there in this audience here, but last year, I came here, and I asked the council a question. What are your plans and what have you done for the people in your community that are actually senior citizens? And you really didn't have anything to go on, and so what I am proposing is the one thing that actually can involve everybody in the community, no matter what age, you've got from 8 to 88, is actually kind of funny, it is pickleball. And I don't know if any of you have ever played pickleball, I don't know if you've played in other communities, I have not seen you at our pickleball court here in our own town, but I am inviting you, Kenny Whiniger invited you to his porch, I'm inviting you down to the pickleball courts, and then you can see at firsthand how horrible and bad shape they're in. And I wish I would have bought my box of chalk that we have to get out all the time, because it rained today, so that means somebody has to go down there and re-chalk all those lines every single time.
Man, if you don't mind, if I could just jump in real quick, we've been talking about this for the last couple of months. And the beginning of July, the pickleball courts in the bottom of Tower Park will all be permanently lined for six courts. So, that's already been approved by the rec committee. Uh, we have a rec committee meeting this Wednesday at 9:00 AM, where we're going to go over the other options that we have throughout the town.
Okay, and it's, and I just want to let you all know, and my pickleball friends here can attest to this. It is such a wonderful, wonderful thing to see. We get kids from Northern Kentucky University, so they're in their twenties, and then our oldest member, Jim Dew, is 86. And to see. And to see, uh, that wide variety of age getting together during one activity, whether the, uh, you're an opponent or whether you're on the same team and you're competing and you're exercising and you're outside, but you're also, um, you're addressing the needs of our social skills to be able to have that twenty-year-old talking to that eighty-five-year-old. And it's, and, and people don't really understand it, because you're not gonna get it in any, any other sport that you mentioned. You're not gonna get that kind of, um, chemistry and that, and that dialogue going on between your citizens of this town, uh, doing one activity. And it's a sight to behold and I wish you all would come down. We, we invite you all the time. We, we would love to have you come down. Um, we're, we're friendly people, um, and we'll be happy to teach you. I taught my, um, brought my grandson down just last week. He brought a friend. We come walking down the hill and lo and behold, there's three other courts, people playing. I didn't know who they were, just met them. Two of them had the nets in the wrong spot because they're not marked. So, which is good that you're gonna be marking those. Um, but it was just so wonderful that we're all down there and we don't even really know each other, but yet we can come together for, for common cause and to exercise. Um, and it's a wonderful plus to any kind of community and so many town, we're about the only town that doesn't have an assigned pickleball courts. We're the only town, really. Um, so I think I have other pickleball people that are gonna come up and I'm glad to hear that. When is that, can I get on record when that is going to start?
We tried to get it this month. Uh, it's the same company that did the Riverside, um, basketball, but they, they weren't able, they had too many jobs ahead. We were hoping they were just gonna switch real quick and run down there, but they weren't able to. So they said they were gonna get to us at the beginning of July.
Alright, have you been down there on those courts, like really walking around and checking out how bad?
Or a couple of months ago, I did.
Uh, well, they're, I don't know how they're playing tennis on it, to be quite honest. And pickleball, it slopes down, very dangerous for us. Uh, there's so many cracks in, in, down there. It's, it's dangerous. They really need to be leveled and totally redone for, even for tennis players for that matter. Alright, so we're gonna, it's gonna start soon?
Beginning of July is when they said they're gonna come in.
Beginning of July, okay. We got that on record. Alright, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jim Becker. I live at Forty Walden Lane and I am here as well to speak about pickleball. Um, I will try to amend my comments to, uh, in light of the things that have already been discussed. But I, as everyone else, have been playing on the makeshift courts at Tower Park in Newport. And quite frankly, generally play out of the city because, because of the condition, you know, to play on reg- regular, normal regulation courts. Um, and I have been playing for about two years now and it seems like we've been in a holding pattern the whole time, uh, with regard to new courts. Um, I decided to educate myself on the evolution of the process, so I read through the city council meetings for the last four years and watched some of the recent meetings. And I discovered that, I guess, in November of twenty nineteen, that was three and a half years ago, that's when lines were added to, to lower courts, um, which kinda introduced, uh, pickleball to Tower Park. And I believe that was the last thing that the city has done in order to facilitate pickleball play. For about a year after that, there, there were no mentions in the minutes. And then for about the last two years, there, there have been people that come up and speak and/or there's a discussion on a fairly regular basis here at the meetings. Um, I'll kinda skip over the demand. I think it's pretty well established that we have a lot of demand for the courts. Uh, as many six courts are going at a time down there. Um, I was there last Wednesday. There were, in the evening, there were twenty-four people on the lower courts and there was a group playing on one of the tennis courts up above. Uh, and the ages range from young kids to senior citizens. It's a, literally a sport for all of participating. Um, regarding the locations, um, the demand does seem to be, uh, the demand does seem to recognize that there's adding courts, um, in multiple, I'm sorry. Looks like, um, that adding courts, there has been discussion that there, um, courts need to be added at multiple meetings. Um, to the best of my knowledge, there are three options: Memorial, Memorial Parkway, Tower Park and Highland Park. Tower Park seems to be a temporary fix rather than a permanent one unless there are some other... I don't know if there's any other possibility for other locations, but the, the current location isn't that good. Uh, the previous speaker went over that. The court's in pretty bad condition. And even if it is striped with six courts, um, the southeast side of the nets is just not very good. There are cracks in the pavement from, uh, without resurfacing or redoing of the court. Um, it is, uh, not an ideal, I mean, it's mediocre at best. Six courts walk is also very tight on that space. Uh, the discussion there on Memorial last, at the last meeting, um, it seemed to be indicated that, that is at least two years out. Um, I don't know the full details of everything that happened, that is going on with that property, but, uh, that's, that seems like a long timeframe, um, to kind of remain a possibility. I don't know what the, the full development plan of that space looks like. The, to me, the logical, much to the dismay of the other people, the logical fit is Highland Park. There's a, a ready-made area for that. Um, with regards to all the Mayfield residents, I think that could, it could be easily accessed off of James. I don't know if there would have to be some improvement to James, but I think for the most part, if you're going to the lower area, you'd generally avoid coming in from Mayfield. I would think that almost everybody would enter from James. There doesn't seem to be any use for this property right now. Um, I know that council voted no on the Splash Park in February, so nothing is earmarked for this location. Um, and it also seems very unlikely to be used as a field because there are two manholes in the middle of the, running through the middle of the property. Last month, Mr. Blais spoke about using this location for pickleball, but there, but he didn't seem to get any agreement, um, for this location. And I'm not sure why. Um, and then Mr. Ellison spoke about the noise, um, for the area. And I, I researched and kinda came up with the same thing he, he did with, uh, pickleball within a hundred feet generally has about seventy decibels. Uh, at four hundred feet, it's about fifty deci- fifty-eight decibels. And that's without any acoustical barrier that can be added to a fence. If that's added and drops at another ten decibels and that is equivalent to a household refrigerator or a quiet office, it's less than both of the, both of those things. So, the no, the noise level should be below, um, uh, below those items. Uh, with that, with this information, it's fair, I think it's fair to conclude that four hundred feet away within the acoustical barrier would, uh, would be adequate for all the residents in the area. The only one that's inside of four hundred feet is the, there's a flag lot right by, um, right by Moyer, where there's a house that's about three hundred and fifty feet away, but it also has some trees up there for the noise. One added, one other thing that I wanted to mention is that there actually are houses. The apartments on Memorial are actually within, are about three hundred and fifty feet away as well and there's many more residents. That's if the, that's if the courts are located on the southeast side, which is the widest part and probably the most likely place for them to be located, because I would imagine the entrance would be in the flatter part of the road instead of turn there. So I would imagine that the pickleball courts would be located, you know, closer to the curb. Uh, but that, they would be somewhere in the same vicinity, uh, distance-wise. So, again, I don't know, uh, there would be, in light of all the Mayfield residents speaking up, I don't know what kind of improvements would be necessary for James and if, if any, but, um, I think that would be something worth considering as well. I don't know if there's ever been any consideration for entering Highland Park in James, but, uh, it sounds like that's something they're advocating for. But, um, in closing, I, I think that the, you know, it sounds like there's a park meeting set up in a couple, in a couple of days. And I would, I just wanna voice my, um, support for adding the pickleball courts there, so we can do it in a more timely manner and, um, a more permanent manner for, uh, you know, a, uh, sport that many people in the city participate in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, before we get on, uh, you got, we just were appointing Michael Morgan as a member. I realize he's here and he's gotta give a child. Would they be able to accelerate that matter?
Sure.
No problem. You did a lot of month, I do.
Sure.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second? All those in favor of adjusting the agenda, do just say aye. Alright, okay. Uh, this will be municipal order, M O zero seven twenty-two and three, municipal order appointing Mike Morgan as a member of the Port Thomas Sport of Ethics for a one-year term. Mike, you wanna come up and introduce yourself and?
Yeah.
Thank you.
This little boy's been very patient. Enjoying, uh, checking out the building here. Uh, yeah, my name's Michael Morgan and, uh, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer any, any, but, yeah. I appreciate you volunteering to, uh, represent an alternate.
I spoke with Michael Knight today, uh, you know, we got his resume. It's what we've been liking, he lives on Riverside back by Andy. I was impressed with his, uh, background, his knowledge and wanting to participate. This is not the sexiest board to be on, you know, especially at this time and, uh, I just wanna, you know, I enjoyed talking today and lucky to have you and lucky, uh, to have found you and, and you want to participate, moved here, even, and moved your family. How long ago did you, uh, move here?
So, uh, five, six years ago. So my wife is from here, grew up here. I'm not originally from here. I grew up in the southern end of the county, um, so I'm kinda like a transplant, I guess. Um, but I love it. Uh, just absolutely love being here and, um, especially back in Riverside, it's, yeah.
It's a special community for sure. Glad to have you. Thank you. I appreciate your time today and I would like to hear from you.
Yeah, same, same.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve. To approve. Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming to introduce yourself too.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we're gonna have Elizabeth out training.
I'll, I'll, I'll wait till the end, prefer till the end, sorry.
Uh, Nancy Golden?
Hi.
Hi.
You know what? I'm really, really loud and you can probably see. I've had years of public speaking and, um, I'm hesitant about this, because I might pierce somebody's ear. Uh, seriously.
What's it go for?
Okay, alright.
He's a lot of recording it, so he probably wanna make sure you're online again.
Just let me know, please.
Yeah, we'll let you know.
I'll try it out. Um, I get, when I get in passion too, I get louder, so there's that. Uh, my name is Nancy Golden and I currently live with my parents on two oh seventh Holiday Lane. Um, I'm two of kind of a, well, I grew up here. I got my Bluebird shirt on for good luck, obviously. Graduated in eighty-six. Um, but, uh, there's a problem I wanna, um, in any event, I, I lived for over twenty-eight years in Ohio. So I'm recently back in October twenty-one. And I didn't read protocol or anything, so I apologize in advance. I'm winging it. Um, in any event, um, the problem I wanna just discuss is deer overpopulation and danger to citizens, animals, even little kids. Um, so my dog Lily, um, is my only daughter, um, was attacked by a highly aggressive doe in the neighborhood off of Summit and Grand, that subdivision, on Holiday Lane. Um, she had a fawn, we, our property backs onto woods. Um, she had a fire in the fawn near the woods. Um, my dog was not, um, even facing her. She's not aggressive. She's a therapy animal. I have her very well trained. Um, it's lucky she wasn't facing her because she was attacked from behind. Had she been attacked in front, she would be dead. Um, um, this same doe has been roaming around, um, that subdivision and has attacked four other dogs um, and rushed a man back into his house. Um, she, uh, I think it's the same doe. I'm not positive. They're very, very tame in Port Thomas, as you probably, unafraid of humans, as you probably know. Um, in any event, um, like I said, she rushed a guy back into his house. I have, I did contact the police. We basically said, there's nothing they can do. I don't know if there are many representatives of the police here, but, um, the police home was very nice, that said, there's nothing we can do. Um, I know of folks all around Port Thomas who feed deer. In fact, our next-door neighbor feeds deer. There were ten bucks in the yard, um, in winter. I have a picture. I don't have it with me. I can email it. Um, I'm gonna talk to him, um, because his mother was the one that called us to tell us Lily was attacked while it was happening. Um, so I'm gonna try to talk to him first. There's a fine, it's illegal, it's not enforced. I know it's hard to be enforced, but there are folks on Facebook who are, um, posting, writing, feeding deer out of their hands. Somebody mentioned Clover Ridge over in that subdivision, where deer are widely overpopulated because of development, which I understand has to happen for humans and stuff. But, um, I think there needs to be major consideration as we continue to develop and folks move here and things expand as they need to, that wildlife property is diminished and, um, it can be really dangerous. Obviously, I think we'd all like to protect Mother Nature and humans. Um, but this is a really serious thing. And, uh, when I posted on the group, everything Highlands and Port Thomas, I found out dogs were being injured, stomped, one person said, um, all over the city. Uh, and now, now it's a season that those are with fawn and they're not all safe. Um, so I really came here to kinda network and get your guys advice about what I could do. Um, I've contacted Fish and Wildlife twice. Um, the first time, um, the regular guy, um, Ethan, who, and I have it in my notes somewhere in my phone, I emailed some of you guys, um, was on vacation. Um, the other man, Jason Neely, that I spoke to, um, couldn't speak for Campbell County, but he did say that they could easily come up with community, um, support and at least give a presentation about how it's dangerous to feed deer, how they're not all banded, um, how feeding fines should be, you know, enforced. Um, and, um, so I'm on top of that and there were myriad comments on my Facebook post with pictures, gruesome, sorry, but they were there, of Lily's injuries, that this was happening all over town and people were sad and what can we do? So, um, I don't wanna take up any more time. I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. I, I think the point of feeding deer is an important issue, because we've dealt with the other side of it with the, with the program that we have with, with those. And, but when people feed the deer, they're, it, yeah, it's gonna work in the opposite direction.
It's delicious, yeah.
When you see people feeding deer, and just be polite and say, please don't do that. We have a deer problem in the city and the more you feed them, the more we're gonna have a problem.
I do.
And, and I...
That's a word. But, I, no, respectfully, I do, I do.
No, I know you do and I, I think we all need to do that. If we see people feeding deer and ask, just ask them not to, because that does make the problem worse.
Absolutely.
Maybe we should do a city post on it and let people know that it's a little...
I think we had something in the last news.
I can get signatures from my whole neighborhood if you want. I don't know what's needed.
If you could give me the information that you were talking about some training, it'd be interesting to see that, that's something we could do.
Yeah, I can write that up. You need some public awareness training?
Yeah, you said you had talked to somebody that can come up and...
This is wildlife. Yeah, they just have to get back to me on weight.
Okay, yeah, so if you could pass that on.
Right now, because this is, tis the season, you know, and, yeah. So I really appreciate your time. This is a, this is a really, really...
Hey, Megan?
Me?
You're here.
Okay. Am I allowed to record what I said? Yeah.
Sure.
It's on tape anyway. Okay. Hi, my name is Megan Creek. I live at fifteen-nine Henry Avenue. Um, first of all, I just wanna say it's just wonderful to see so many friends here and smiling faces. Um, I just love being part of this community. I haven't been in this room. Everything is just gorgeous here and it makes me nostalgic, because I remember all of my years that I spent on the Port Tom... because I remember all of my years that I spent on the Fort Thomas Renaissance Board. Thank you who there still then too. But, um. Mr. Neff, was that your name? Oh, we both, what's your name? Whitinger?
Ken Whitinger.
Whitinger, I'm sorry. Thank you, uh, both for everything that you addressed and, um, thank you Debbie. Um, with my marketing degree and with my family owning a small business in Fort Thomas for many years, uh, I often think about supply and demand and how can we create the biggest impact and do something wonderful? How can we make people happy? You know, what demographic market do we really have to hit? And when I think about pickleball, I started playing in February with my dad and my Uncle Tony, um, and all of the different people that I've met and all of the different demographic mark, markets that we're hitting, the connections that we've made. I mean, truly, it's just been so exciting. We play almost every day at the Y M C A. Um, I think, and wanted to just ask maybe a little bit more about the Armory and if we could maybe utilize that. Their courts, they're just beautiful, especially in wintertime and maybe hopefully while we're waiting, courts to be put back in where the tennis courts were on Highland Park.
They were available during the winter. The problem is in June and July, nobody wants to be upstairs.
Right.
Because it's extremely hot. Even basketball teams that want to use it, they use it for one practice and then they go.
Well, I mean, I played volleyball there, Power League and, um, you know, with a bunch of college girls and it was always hot, but we loved it. And I bet our pickleball people don't mind a sweat. We, we're just happy to be together, um, you know, do something together, young and old. Thank you though, uh, for what you said. Um, also, I just keep thinking about Power Park. My dad used to take me down there to the tennis courts and we would hit around. Just seems like it would be the least expensive projects. Um, you know, I'm not into finance, but something to budget and the biggest demand and it creates the most satisfactory results for so many. I just say, let's do this. I definitely think we need to improve James Avenue. We've got parking down there. We'll have to figure it out, how to do an ingress and an egress, you know, maybe to improve things with all of the traffic and all the activities we have. Um, I wanted, in closing, just to address the noise situation. Thank you, um, talking about the decibels and different things. I don't know too much about that, but I do feel like, um, and like Debbie said, come play with us, I invite everybody. It's so neat. I never, you know, I played volleyball in college. I never thought I would compete again at forty-eight. Guess what? I'm competing and playing with, we just played in a tournament at the Y M C A, at the Veterans Fonder, Fonzers, with my dad who's seventy-five. I get goosebumps. Am I okayed? I mean, it's just like, it's just been life-changing. My son Teddy plays, he's fourteen. He comes up and plays with all of us at the Armory. Played with the eighty-one-year-old the other day and kicked my butt, you know? But in closing, uh, to address the pickleball noise and the decibel situation, I think if, if you're really there, um, if you live on Mayfield or somewhere else, already might hear the sound of pickleball. More than anything, you're going to hear laughter and camaraderie. You're going to sense camaraderie and the connections that we've all made, um, between young and old. What you're going to hear is beautiful and I think it's time. And I, I think, just hoping maybe we can put it into our budget and improve James Avenue also. Thank you.
Thank you. Just, uh, a quick comments about pickleball. You know, we've been trying for a long time. Uh, prior to the land being donated to us by Wayne Carlisle, we were focused on trying to add another one next to the tennis courts. We were looking at other areas as well. It was funny because when Wayne offered to donate the property to us, I mentioned that we had an idea of doing pickleball.
Yeah.
Across there on this, on the more stable part of the thing where the, and, and keep the berm there to try to deflect the sound up. He said, oh my gosh, be careful because it is noisy. That's what I'm saying. I understand and I live right up the hill from there. I said, I don't care because my wife makes me sleep with a fan, so I won't. But, um, I, I still have high hopes for that. The, the problem is there's just so many fingers in that pot. We've got sanitation district, we've got the state highway, we've got the city of Newport, the city of Port Thomas. We've got a lot of people to coordinate to get that property ready. I just had a thought though, we have, and I don't know if it's possible or not, can we, can we put a temporary ones down on the parking area in Highland Park and see what noise we get?
The, the problem with that. Take your hand. Uh, no, the problem with that is if we put any many down there right now, we don't have the parking to handle, you know what I mean?
What's the deal on Mayfield?
It's because when they poured that parking lot, it's.
We're talking about by the old Tower Park, I mean, by the old, uh, tennis court.
Yeah, you're talking James Avenue.
Couldn't we expand that area? I mean, couldn't we expand that part? I mean, truly, there was parking and there were tennis courts.
It will work expansion to that, but, and it's just a rough code. You may not be able to play on.
That's true. I forgot about that.
You guys got to try it out. That's all I got to say. I'm looking at each and every one of you. It's life-changing, it really is.
We do have a proposal coming Wednesday though, right?
Wednesday.
For Highland Park area. That's what I thought. Everybody knows there is finally one coming and then it'll go from there, it'll go, uh, Parks Rec. So finally, something down there. Another option.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Mayor, I mean.
On lower level Highland Park on Wednesday morning, there, there's a Parks Rec meeting this Wednesday morning that talked about putting pickleball courts down there.
But I read that comments weren't allowed in, I mean.
Yes.
That is true. But.
The only comment I'll make now is when that was sand volleyball courts that were removed there because there were complaints of the noise of sand volleyball over by the mess hall, they don't access it from James. They come down, I, I see your, some of your children there and they were sand volleyball there. They come right down Mayfield, they park where the shelter is.
You know, when, when people start talking about this, a lot of senior citizens, but they definitely don't want to walk down the hill of Highland Park by theory. Also, there wasn't proper parking down there and James Avenue wasn't a street. They technically went through in front of, uh, the swim club, so it wasn't a good directional street. So when this comes together, I think it's going to.
If it does, could we put signs on the top of, um, Highland and Mayfield saying?
Pickleball. We can, I'm sure we can address all that when, if it comes. I mean, this is just.
I don't think that's a solution.
Yeah.
Any improvement to Highland Park at this point is going to add to the traffic on Mayfield, which we have well documented. It's a problem.
And we need to improve James Avenue. We need another address.
If James were, if James were made an entrance to the park, then entered to the end of the park, they went up the hill and entered the park, people would use James.
Absolutely.
You know, we've been talking about a splash pad for the last year and no one from Mayfield's come up and complained. And now that pickleball's here, we're here a lot. I mean, I'm just saying, it's a no win situation.
I think, I think some of these meetings talked about.
Like, what are we going to do here? Let's just make some people happy.
I mean, I should also say that my husband, I keep trying to get him to play and so does my son Teddy and he's like, oh, it's the pickleball peer pressure. You guys are part of the pickleball mafia. And, uh, but, you know, I also, I wanted to, I'm on second, somebody said, nobody wants to walk down Highland Park.
No one wants to walk down Highlands. We have created a street through James.
Nobody, none of us, including my dad, when we play at Tower Park now, I cringe watching him and my Uncle Tony walk down that, you know, steep, piss-haul line, even it's, I don't think it's been paved in forever, you know? I cringe. It's just like, please, you know, let them sit down there safely.
The splash pad and then practice fields down there, which has an immense amount of traffic. Now we're talking about pickleball court, who is typically seniors are using more or kids, you know what I mean? So then possibly a skate park where people stay there. These are many that don't drive traffic, but it is a public facility that's been there for decades, you know what I mean? So we're trying to make it as good as possible.
It's the American markets as you can. I mean, I'm not a kid and I'm not a senior citizen yet, but I'm forty-eight and I'm playing with my friends.
Maybe you need to say who your dad is, who your uncles are, who your, your dad's cousins are and how athletic they are when they have trouble getting there.
Oh, okay.
Name names.
It is just trouble for senior citizens, people, yeah, with people.
Say the, say the name, Arson, and there are your dad, your uncles, your cousins, your dad's cousins. Athleticism, go on. I mean, if you go to University of Notre Dame, you can't walk in without seeing Arson's stuff.
One other thing, I think, instead of the athletic ability, it's that we like to do things together as a family and that's what I love about pickleball.
I do, I do think that everybody here has.
Folks, we, we kind of, we kind of know what, what's going on. I appreciate it very much.
It wasn't stated.
We really want to do something about pickleball. I really do appreciate everybody coming up here and sharing their concerns. That is very helpful for us as a council and very helpful for the committee to have further discussions about. Yes, the committee meeting is a public meeting, but we, we don't allow public comment because as you can tell, we're going on eight o'clock. We've been here an hour and haven't gotten into, into our meeting yet. Again, this is extremely important, which is why we do this at the beginning of the meeting. But when we have committee meetings, we've gone to the point so that the committee can discuss, so that staff can present the information that they collect for us. But you are all welcome to attend it, but there won't be any comments at that time. But this is very beneficial.
Maybe let's just start with James Avenue and thinking that way. And then I think that would please a lot of people, you know? Let's just get that going. I think it's time. Thanks again for your time.
Elizabeth, did you want to speak?
No, I think it's been covered. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you all very much. We're moving on with the agenda. You're welcome to stay for the meeting. You're welcome to leave if you'd like to be here at any time, that's fine. Um, we are down to, are you any reports, please? And we're down to reports of officers. Fire department monthly report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, uh, to add to my monthly report, as I quoted up fireworks, we've got four fires. So remind all of our residents to, uh, when they're shooting off fireworks, it's the reason why all of our activities are fireworks. You know, don't allow the children to play, uh, with or ignite fireworks. The worst thing to deal with is a, some kind of peaty, yappy burn and that gets common every year with fireworks. Uh, a lot of these are common sense, but in our world, we still see these kinds of accidents happen. Make sure other people out of range before lighting fireworks. Uh, only light fireworks on a smooth, flat surface away from the house and friendly materials. Keep a bucket of water handy in case of, uh, a malfunction or fire. These are all common sense things and like I said, the worst thing that we do in our profession is, is peaty, yappy burn and stuff along that line. That's all.
Is there a code to the proximity of another building?
There, there is not a code of a proximity building. A lot of times the, uh, the firework itself will get a little bit of a distance because there's so many different types of fireworks and everything like that. So they'll say, you know, there's ten feet or fifty feet or a hundred feet, whatever.
So somebody lights off a, 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 figures playing fireworks right next to your house and nothing.
So, so that, that gets into my counterpart Chief Gilroy right there forcing that part of it. The state of Kentucky changed the, uh, the laws as far as fireworks and what is legal or not. And basically, probably about five years ago, they changed it by a lot more than they do since I recall. So, uh, that, there are warning labels on those as far as where you're supposed to be building. If you notice that on, all the time that we do our city fireworks, we're going up the park away from all the structures. In addition, we always have fire crew on one side as well and we let professionals do this.
I thought you were going to explain exactly what was illegal and exactly what was.
KRS 27.
Very clear and clear.
In layman's terms, if you can buy it in a fireworks shop, you're fine. It's a commercial type of deal like Razzies, then you can't have it. It's the easiest and simplest, um, explanation that we come up with. But the KRS, our city ordinance mimicked the KRS and are both very multi-ter paragraph type of deal, grams of powder and everything else, but the stuff you buy in stores, fine.
I'll entertain a motion unless there's other questions for the chief. Motion to repeat the file?
Yes.
Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Both. Great, thanks. Lisa, firemen.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, yeah, fireworks. The only thing I had to talk about from the monthly is we were able to bring back our CSI camp with St. Thomas this year. Um, that's a program we ran with our middle schoolers for several years prior to the pandemic. You know, it was very popular, very well received. We did it for a long time, but we just haven't got invited back to the middle school post pandemic. But we did get invited back to St. Thomas and put on a multi-week, um, class about how all the different things work with all the cool stuff that you see on TV like trace evidence and fingerprinting and all that. So we're happy to offer that and Detective Vance and Lieutenant did a very job putting the whole thing on and the kids loved it. So we'll keep offering that to whoever would like us to come and do it. That's all I had to talk about on the monthly.
Like the St. Thomas school, like the Catholic school in Flushing, I'll put it that way.
All those in favor, please say aye. Both. City ministers report.
Thank you, Mayor. The only, uh, thing I have to report this month is that we do have a recommended meeting at nine o'clock on Wednesday pending anyone's questions and so on.
All right, um, the old business in business, consideration of twenty twenty-three street resurfacing bids.
We received our resurfacing bids that was put out in the, the packet. Um, it is, I guess you technically don't need to vote to approve it because it's in the budget, but normally we would bring that in. We, we had planned to bring that in for the last meeting, uh, but just wanted, wanted council to be aware, we did receive those and they get slightly higher, which is why the.
We're too far off from estimate about just some are a little lower, some are a little higher. They were pretty, it was pretty good considering the amount of money.
Well, when I saw the first number for, um, the one that had Newport share, it lost a little bit of the joke, but then he reminded me a portion of that's Newport. So, yeah, they were, they were slightly higher, but it wasn't bad, but it is in, um, the budget for approval tonight.
I have a quick question on that, just reviewing the bids, it was always interesting to me. I think I know the answer. Does the city have experience with each of those companies that bid for shoe resurfacing?
Yeah, that, that's definitely, we don't go as low as bidder. You know, we, we do have, um, a couple, uh, vendors we've had in the past that have been really bad. So even if they come in low bid, we won't use them. You know, it's, it's not just about the cost, it's about quality of work and everything else, so. Uh, but yes, we, we, between the city and CT, you know, both of them reviewing each vendor, we take, we absolutely take that into consideration, especially when we're doing large projects.
Tends, tends to be, he's been, uh, Eaton and three were most frequently, but we've done with, dealt with, and even dealt with a couple of others, but they tend to win most.
All right, before we go on to ordinances, I, I just wanted to say something before All right, before we go on to ordinances, I, I just wanted to say something before we went on to ordinances, I uh, I don't know if anybody had a chance to attend the uh, the art show that um, Rick Riley put on at One Highland. Um, it was on the third floor there, it was spectacular. Uh, the person who curated, did an amazing job, the art that was there was fantastic, it was very Van Gogh-esque, very bright. The building inside is beautiful, kind of looks like a gallery now, obviously nobody's been in there, it's white walls, beautiful cabinets, beautiful furniture, but um, I was glad they had another weekend, but I'm not kidding, it was amazing, they've done a fantastic job up there, but the reason I'm bringing this up is uh, is when I went up there, it was on the third floor and as I walked up there and looked out the windows and the views and everybody's always saying they have views of just subway or just anything else, that third floor has very nice views. They have the treetops, they have a lot in there, but the reason I'm saying this is that recommendation of forty feet or thirty-five feet, if that's the height of the village players, really comes into play with our consideration of planning zoning in the future. Because if we go as tall as that building is, we will, they will lose that view on the expensive flats up top. Um, but uh, as far as quality and product and the way they exhibited that, I was very, very impressed. And I just thought everybody should know that it is, it's very nice and the view is there, but also it really reinforced the agreement we made the other day to kind of be careful on the height restriction in the center of town, because it, it's nice, they did a really good job. Whoever curated that, I think it was a woman that lives there, saw her, she was damn, Fort Thomas coffee caterer, she was great, yeah, uh, come on, I think, it's a great job.
Do you need action on this? So we're down ordinance oh eleven, is that okay?
Yeah.
I don't think we need action because it's in the budget.
Okay.
Excellent, I saw you looking at me, I thought maybe I was wrong. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Report is first Wednesday twelve through twenty twenty, general fund three hundred fifty-five thousand five hundred seventeen dollars and forty-eight cents. Public sports data fund forty-two thousand eight hundred and four dollars and sixty-six cents. CBD revitalization sixty-four thousand one hundred twenty-nine dollars and one hundred and twenty cents. Wait speed is nine hundred two thousand two hundred fifty dollars. Police and fire attendants are following five hundred sixty-three dollars and seven cents. Seven six thousand two hundred sixty-five dollars and seven cents. Waiting under sign numbers of violence, recommend that marks number one, two, nine, seven, six, three, one, three, one, four, six, eight, person, pressure of the other, seven, seven, ten.
Any motion? Uh, who to approve? Second. Roll call, both please. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, ordinance oh eleven, budget.
Eleven twenty twenty-three, ordinance amending a general fund budget for the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky for the fiscal year of seven one twenty twenty-two through June thirty twenty twenty-three by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government.
Any motion? Is there a second? A second. Roll call, both please.
This is Michael Bosh, aye.
Aye.
Mr. Allison.
Aye. 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 Okay, ordinance twelve, twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
And ordinance adopting a general fund budget, municipal road eight, fine budget, fund budget, debt service fund budget, capital projects, CBD fund, health insurance fund and race disposal fund budget for the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky for the fiscal year seven one twenty twenty-three through six thirty twenty twenty-four by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government.
All right, any motion? Is there a second? Sorry. Roll call, both please. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, ordinance thirteen, and ordinance amending the personnel and pay classification plan a unilaterally increasing the official pay table by eight, at eight percent effective on July one twenty twenty-three and amending the compensation ranges for various positions.
Do you approve? A second. Roll call, both. Definitely. Aye. All right, municipal order, oh, we already did that one.
We did.
Awesome, I'll motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Second. I, I, did I hear about? So now a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good job.
Do we have a control over adjournment? That'd be fantastic.